We'll call the work session to order for Wednesday, October 2nd. Happy fall. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. May I have a motion to approve the personnel docket?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the personnel docket.
May I have a second?
I second.
Dr. Martin, second.
Okay.
Ms. Tanner. Any discussion? No? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basin? Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
We're gonna move on to 4.01, School Board Goal Number One Annual Measure. Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Buffalo, Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair, members of the board, staff, our community. So, this afternoon, Dr. Poe is prepared to share some accreditation information with you. We set a goal this year. He's gonna tell you more about where we are in terms of meeting the goal and other pertinent information related to that. So, without further ado, Dr. Poe.
Dr. Birdsong, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Buffalo, Vice Chair, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. As it's been stated, I'm here to share an annual measure for School Board Goal One. And Goal One is that 100% of schools will be accredited by the 27, 28 accreditation year. The percentage of schools meeting accreditation requirements will increase from 57.1% during accreditation year 22, 23 to 65.8% during accreditation year 24, 25. So, as discussed at the July retreat as well, when we looked at the data, we did notice there's a decrease of two schools being fully accredited from school year 24, 25 accreditation years. Five schools moved from being accredited to being accredited with conditions from the two years, and then three schools moved from being accredited with conditions to moving up to being accredited. And the charts and graphs are up there on the document. And scrolling through a couple points about what is going well across the division. First, the annual pass rates for English, which includes the reading and writing for all students, as well as all reported subgroups, realized increases when compared to the 20, 22, 23 rates. The all-student subgroups saw an increase of 3% and is now only 4% below pre-pandemic rates. So, we've almost met that pre-pandemic rate. Twenty-two elementary schools are in Level One in English, with only two elementary schools at Level Three and two at Level Two. For students in high school, there was a gain of 1% on reading pass rates in Norfolk Public Schools, and the state saw a decline of 1%. So, we're closing the gap there. Annual pass rates for mathematics for students in grades three through eight increased by 3%, which again is 2% higher than gains made by the statewide average math growth. Twenty-three of our elementary schools are Level One in mathematics, while only two elementary schools are Level Three and one is at Level Two. And annual pass rates for students in high school mathematics courses increased by 8% in NPS, while the statewide average increase is only 5%. So, closing the gap there as well. Additionally, NPS has decreased the gap between the division and state averages from 15% in the spring of '22 to 8% in the spring of '24. Eighty-three percent of Norfolk Public Schools recorded an increase in the annual pass rate for mathematics. We have closed the gap between the division average and the state average from 12% during spring of '22 to just 4% during spring of '24 with science, high school, EOC, science courses. And 29 schools are Level One for chronic absenteeism, while only one is Level Three, and 11 are Level Two, which is a drastic change from last year, if you recall. What's not going well? Although the division science pass rates saw an average increase across the board, six schools still missed being accredited only due to science pass rates. And as we shared at the retreat, one of those schools was by one student, a couple schools were by less than five students. They were that close. And just as a reminder, if these six schools had made the benchmark for science, the accreditation rate would be 70.7%. Three schools are at Level Three for all three of the all-performance level academic indicators of English, mathematics, and science. Three of five high schools are at Level Three for dropout rates, while the remaining two are at Level Two. And I would like to point out that two of the three, the dropout rate was the only thing holding them from being fully accredited as well, was the dropout rate. So, we would've had a total of eight more schools accredited if it wasn't for the dropout rate in high schools and the science and the elementary schools. The division average reading annual pass rate has stayed level for the past three years. There are nine schools at Level Three for mathematics gap groups and 15 at Level Two, leaving only 17 at Level One. And there are 19 schools at Level Three for science and eight schools at Level Two, leaving 14 at Level One. And I would like to point out additionally that 14 of the 19, or 73% of the schools at Level Three, are elementary schools. So, what are we doing in next steps that are moving forward? A lot of this information's been shared as we were planning for the school year to come, and a lot of it was also shared with budget time for requests that we made. Starting with the elementary science instruction time, that was a large change that we made at the elementary level. So, science and history used to be taught 30 minutes every day at all of our elementary schools. So, now what we've done is we've made it so science is taught for an hour every day for a unit, then the next unit they do is social studies for an hour every day, so they can get more in-depth lesson coverage. We were finding issues with teachers getting into the depth of the labs and the understanding, which was one of our holdbacks on our science scores. So, increasing that instructional chunk was a large change in scheduling for us to do. So, that started at the beginning of the school year. Again, with the budget allocations, we added science tutor positions at all elementary schools to assist with fourth and fifth grade science, small group instruction, and pull out where needed to give additional support to the teacher during labs and just small group instruction. We did continue the early literacy tutoring program. Literacy tutor positions were added to all middle and high schools for students in grades six and nine. That was put on place because we've just seen the, like I mentioned in one of the "not going well," we've been level at 61% in reading for three years. So, just needing the additional support in those transition years is what the data told us. The middle school support block tutor positions were continued. We continued our relationship with university instructor tutors, using the all-in budget and the additional funding from the board local budget as well. We're adding quarterly science assessments to have a better pace of data tracking throughout the year in grades four through eight. There's been additional professional development and lesson development sessions are being conducted throughout the year, specifically for science teachers as well, where they've been scheduled monthly, multiple sessions each day, so teachers have a selection of when they can come into, and it's specifically for unit planning and preparing for the next unit. Attendance recovery has already started. We got word from VDOE, and we've already put the information out to principals, so that we're able to start all that a lot quicker this year. And then there's been a much more rigorous professional development plan for the science of reading for our K through eight teachers. That attaches to VLA, and it also attaches what we've started even years ago, when we started talking about literacy here in this very room. And then, most importantly, what you'll hear about following this presentation is the preparation for a new accountability system, which will likely change a lot of this conversation we're having as well. There's, you'll see, there's a lot to that as well. So, that concludes the information on just the annual update for where we are with overall accreditation. And just maybe for questions you may have.
Okay. School board members, you've heard the report. Are there any questions? I have one. And then, Dr. Gabriel, you can go after me. Dr. Poe, the three schools that are at Level Three for all academic indicators, English, mathematics, and science, do you?
Let me cheat you down. So, we have J Cox Elementary.
PB Young.
Mm-hmm.
And Ruffner.
Yeah, look at that. PB Young and Ruffner.
Can the board have a copy?
This was, you have this. This was from the July retreat.
That is from the July, okay.
From the July retreat.
Dr. Birdsong, repeat those. The other two, J Cox.
PB Young.
PB Young.
And Ruffner.
And remember, PB Young and Ruffner are--
They're two connected because of, yeah, the grade configuration.
Okay.
Right.
If I can just clarify, three, two, and one.
One, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, so Level One means that you've met the benchmark. You're at or above the benchmark. Level Two, there's a range below the benchmark. Depending on reading or math, the range can vary a little bit. Level Three is you're below the Level Two range. So, Level Three means you're in the most dire of conditions.
J Cox.
PB Young.
PB Young.
And Ruffner.
Which are really connected schools, but they're reported separately.
Dr. Gabriel?
Okay. I have three questions. One of them is broad, and two of them are a little bit more specific. So, the broad question is, if you were to just give us your, this is the state of NPS right now academically, based upon our raw pass rates, and then based upon our growth, break it down for us. What would you say our state is?
So, that's a deep question.
Yeah.
I think, you know, by content, it varies.
Okay.
I think when we're looking at reading, whether we're looking at pass rates or growth, we're pretty level. Growth, we're seeing a little bit more in there, but when we look at pass rates, the last three years, 61, 61, 61 have been our pass rates. Math, we're seeing growth.
Okay.
But math, we're also not quite as close to the pre-pandemic rate yet.
Okay.
But we're seeing stronger growth in math. Science, we saw growth. And I think our big, our big holdback with science was the previous year, we had schools that showed improvement. So, they got what's called R-10, a reduction of 10% in their failure rate. And then this year, they might've shown a smaller decline or not enough improvement at the R-10. So, they, even though they made it last year, they might not have made it this year. So, overall, I think when we look at accreditation, it's so hard, because knowing the data down to the fact that we're literally just a few students away at, like, three of our elementary schools, and a few students away at one of our high schools with dropout rate, knowing that, we would've made the goal. But we can't rest on that, right?
Right.
So, we know there's work ahead, and that's why we're still focused on doing everything that we're doing to support our students as we go through. But I also think what you'll see in the next presentation is it's really gonna rock everybody's world, to be honest with you. None of this is gonna be focused on, it's no longer accreditation anymore in the next framework.
Yeah. And, you know, accreditation is what the outward language is to the public, because when they look at a school, they're gonna see, is this school accredited or not? But I know internally, what we look at are, are they reading at grade level?
Right.
Are they proficient in math? And that's really, that's kind of where I'm getting at with the question, like, do you, so right now, we're kind of steady in reading, but in math, you see the gains that are being made, and it is what it is.
Right. Year over year. And, you know, we're just getting like our false star data in, so I'm excited to see where that falls.
Yeah.
You know, because we've been talking about the early literacy tutors for a while, and when are we gonna see a pop in third grade? And are we gonna see that?
Yeah.
Because we've seen it in the early years. We've seen it in your pre-K data.
And we've been seeing it come up.
Yes.
So, this is the year we should start to see that in third grade.
Okay. So-- So, my other two questions. You had mentioned that for science, you're gonna, you have some individuals that are gonna be special tutors, and you're gonna have students out in small group instruction. What is the division's directive on how those students are selected? Is it based upon a teacher recommendation? Is it based upon a score? And are you all tracking the time that they spend with this individual or entity, and then comparing that to any progress that's made?
So, that's a great question. The answer is yes and no. And the reasoning is that it, our hopes are it changes daily. So, the directive and the goal of this is that when a student leaves the classroom and then comes into a classroom, that we're doing daily assessments, and that the teacher is using data from the lesson the day before to regroup students, to know who got the concept or didn't get the concept. And there may be one day where the three of you got the concept beautifully one day, but the next day, really didn't understand it. So, it might be then the tutor's working with you. So, the teacher will track that the best they can, but it's really day by day, who needs it based off the previous day's lesson? Because if we wait like quarter by quarter, and then only tutor those students by quarter, we're really missing the mark. So, we've added daily, you know, daily assessments in there, you know, that moving away from more summative data, it's just live actual data that teachers have access to, that's not, doesn't come up to the division level, but it's a teacher, oh, I can see this, and I know this is how I need to group my students because of the data.
Okay. And then, this is the last question. What access do our students have to actual textbooks? So, I know that there are some grade levels that you can have access to the books on Canvas, but as far as access to the actual textbooks, so that a parent can work with a child, what does the access look like for students?
It varies by grade and by subject.
Okay.
Because I know, I would have to research that, Dr. Gabriel, to give you a better answer on it.
Okay.
Because we have a balance of it.
Okay.
And there are plenty of textbooks, but there are also a lot of interactive materials with, that have parent access as well.
Mm-hmm.
To it. But we do have a balance of it, but I don't have it in my head exactly which ones do or which ones don't.
That's fine. Okay.
So, we'll have Ms. Basin, and then Dr. Martin, and then Mr. Clanton. Oh, Dr. Martin?
Based on the previous response, one thing I've brought up before, and I continue to wonder why, so I'm gonna ask it. When you talk about, so it seems that the teacher should know which students aren't, you know, are maybe lagging behind on the comprehension as new lessons are being introduced. So, why not have those students already prepped, maybe, like, have, give them like a pre-lesson, so it gives them more time to assimilate with the rest of the group, instead of waiting until after everyone was introduced to the lesson? And then, I mean, it can't be a huge variation of the students that are always, you know, maybe slower to grasp the concepts, right? So, they should be known based on all the data and everything we have on these students. So, why is it after and not before to give them a chance to actually then catch up and be able to participate fully in that classroom?
So, instructionally, I think there's a little bit of both going on, but mostly, you know, we don't have daily pre-assessments, like, that are formative in nature. So, going into it, the teacher may know generally these students are the ones who struggle the most, and the teacher will be working with the most, and that's always how they make up their small groups, so that they know which ones need what kind of supports based off prior knowledge going into it. But, you know, with the time of the lesson, you know, especially at elementary school, the time is very structured for when they have to transition to topic to topic. And without being able to do something after school, like the day before, to pre-do it, which some of our teachers probably do, most of what we structure with our tutoring is to make sure that, that when we find out during the lesson that students are struggling, that we're able to pull them during that lesson. So, it's not like we're waiting a day to do it. You know, in that lesson, if we find out they're struggling, then we can do a small group pull-out and say, let me re-explain it to you a different way. So, I mean, that's really the format that we use the most.
I know. Ms. Basin?
If I may, I just wanted to add, in thinking about how we structure our lessons daily, I'm going old-school on you. It's new terminology now, Madeline Hunter anticipatory sets. Y'all like that, didn't you? So, every day, there's a daily opportunity, like, when you're introducing the lesson, what you try to do is reach back from the previous day to see, to make sure they've retained what they've learned, and also try to get them motivated about what the day's lesson is going to be, and do a quick assessment of what their prior knowledge. So, you're really, you are reaching back, you're seeing what they know, and also gearing your lesson towards the feedback from what you get from the anticipatory set. So, it's not always, we're waiting until the end of the lesson to find out what you know, because that's also done at the beginning of the lesson through the anticipatory set, too. So, there are multiple opportunities throughout the lesson to assess what the kids know and are able to do. Does that help you?
Yeah, I'm not thinking like the day before, but like a week before, you know what your lesson's gonna be. And if you can get these children ahead, you know, earlier in the school year, and start introducing things, and that's, so that they're not, everyone else is moving ahead, and they're still trying to catch up. And that's, I just think, it just makes sense--
We call it scaffolding. It's scaffolding.
I don't know the terminology, but--
Yeah, it's, yes.
Yeah.
Every year skilled it. Scaffolding.
Okay. There's a particular class that I'm thinking of, where the teacher has the student watch a video the night before on the lesson that she is gonna teach the next day. And what it does is it breaks everything down, so that they're getting a first dose, and then the next day, they actually get the lesson. And I think that's what you're getting at, is can we preview, is there a way that, if you have kids identified that struggle with material, is there a way that you can tutor them up for that, whatever that day's lesson is, and say, hey, look, tomorrow, we're gonna talk about force and matter. I want you to watch this video.
So, yes, Dr. Gabriel, that the--
I think we're just all trying to help the best way we can.
No, I appreciate that. So, the flipped classroom model is where you, your homework is, like, your pre-work is not practicing 30 problems, or reading a chapter and outlining the chapter. Your pre-work is watching a lesson and trying to learn new on your own, so that when you come in, there's a different way of teaching, so that you're kind of strengthening what you've learned. So, we do have a few teachers that do that. We don't have it set up across the division where we have that, but, I mean, we can definitely, especially with science and some others where we struggle, we can, you know, we can look into something like that. Because I know we have, we have supporting software that probably has that on it. So, yeah, we could, I appreciate the ideas and the thoughts. I mean, that's what this is about, right? So, and I know Mr. Brady's over there writing notes right now. I see him, so--
I have found that to be extremely helpful, just as someone in science myself, and working, being a part of a tutoring group right now, having them preview the lessons and with material that is very on their level, animated cartoon, explaining concepts, and then they go back and they hear the actual lesson. I have found that to be particularly helpful, so, and whatever we can do to help.
Absolutely.
Ms. Basin?
Yeah? Were you done? Yeah. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me pull this back up. So, I'd like to, I have a few questions. So, starting with the what is going well, you, there's a lot of references to, or comparisons with our state averages. Can you share a little more about why that's important?
Well, I think, you know, if we only look at our data in solo and not compared to how the state's doing overall, then I think we're missing out. Because then, you know, we could, we could've gained 10% and the state average was a 20% gain. Then, did we, you know, did we really show the growth we should've showed across the state? And one of the things you'll hear a little bit about in the next presentation around how growth will be calculated in the future is a comparison to state growth.
Okay. Appreciate that. And next, so what specific strategies were going well, not going well, that led to some of the improvements that were noticed?
So, I think what was not going well with science was the instructional time, which is why we switched that around, and also teacher support. We know, you know, an elementary teacher has knowledge in all areas. That's a requirement of their degree. Science is not always their favorite area. So, a couple of years ago, the science team developed pre-lessons for teachers, basically videos for teachers before the unit, so they knew, this is what I really need to know, that I can convey the information to teachers. So, continuing on with that and adding that more to the professional development, adding the science tutors for the instructional support as well at the elementary level was another way to look, because our, you know, when you have six schools just because of science, we know we need to focus on that science a little bit more. We have the data that shows the improvements we've seen with PALS, with our early literacy tutors. And so, we know continuing that was an important, important area of work. We know our literacy, our reading specifically, has been flat. So, when we look at our data, the sixth grade scores and the ninth grade scores, we see some challenges there. So, adding those tutors were an area that we wanted to put into. So, you know, overall, that's what I really tried to lay out this time was, these are the items we're continuing to move forward, because we saw success, or we need to see success in different areas.
Okay. And then, so, you know, you're talking, talk about annual pass rates and the all-students group. So, did you see anything specific subgroups where we could, we need to target interventions and strategies toward, you know, sometimes all students, if one particular subgroup?
Our two subgroups still with the highest need are our Ls with their actual reading pass rate. When you put in the access for Ls and the, you know, the points we get for that, it clouds a little bit. But the reading, the reading pass rates for our L students, of course, is gonna be a big struggle. And then, our students with disabilities. I mean, that's no secret. That's statewide, nationwide, a challenge that we have.
Okay. So, that sounds like a high-leverage area to target interventions and strategies around our students with disabilities. And if you could help me understand connecting that to our next steps, like, what specific strategies, resources are we, are we using to work, you know, to, I guess, accelerate growth in that subgroup?
Sure. So, you know, as we've talked about before with the tutoring, the UI, or the literacy tutors, or the, now, the science tutors, or the reading tutors, and middle school tutors, those are all individually done by score. So, we would have a higher percentage of our students with disabilities probably seeing tutors than others, because they, you know, we look specifically, especially with all-in funding, we have to look at students who were unsuccessful in their SOL test.
Right.
So, that is, in a lot of cases, those are one-on-one, or very small group tutoring sessions that we do.
And are those tutors specialized in special education?
The, no, the UI tutors are content. They're content--
Not necessarily special education.
Not necessarily special education.
What impact does that have on the learning for, the teaching and learning for a student with--
Well, it's still, so it's still, you know, they may not have a degree or a speciality with our students with disabilities, but they still have a degree, and they have content knowledge in that area, and able to break it down a different way than the teacher. And we know that several accommodations are around small grouping for our students with IEPs. So, that would help with that. And then, what we've also done last year was a huge focus, and we're continuing it this year, with specially-designed instruction, where last year, we focused that professional development with specifically our special education teachers. And this year, there's a collaborative effort between our special education teachers and our curriculum and instruction. So, between the special education department and the curriculum instruction department, where all the PDs are together, and we're doing the sessions in a collaborative way to talk about how do we support all learners in the classroom.
And did you, you talked about increasing time in science, so I--
I just wanna reiterate, it's not increasing time in science. So, it's the same time. We increase the instructional, so they had 30 minutes every day previously. Now, it's like they have an hour for their unit of science, and then they don't teach science, but they only teach social studies, and it's an hour for social studies. Then the next unit, they go back to science.
Oh, that's how they use it.
So, they, so they have a depth of time to get into content-richer material, instead of, you know, if it's a half hour, that's, that's really barely touching, especially if you're doing labs. So, now we've changed the construct of what it looks like.
Okay. So, I didn't realize that structure had changed, and then, because I, you know, can only, I don't remember what it used to be, science, social studies, science, social studies, you know? So, and I was, so it sounds like you probably were referencing back to the time when that previous model was used, and that seemed to work better, or-- when that previous model was used and that seemed to work better or that the results declined with this going thirty minutes every day.
Yeah, we just haven't seen the data we need to see. And we've also been doing research on, there's, there are a few divisions across the state that teach all of the science in, in fifth grade and also stays in fourth grade. So we're looking at that, too. So if we still don't see movement here, what else could be done to have it that way? But that's, would be the next step.
Okay. And I have one final question, if I may.
Yes, you may, Ms. Basin.
So you talk a little bit, so since we've been monitoring throughout the year, we've had interim goals around chronic absenteeism and dropout rates. And I know in the next steps, you mentioned attendance recovery and to, to aid in chronic absenteeism and to recover dropouts. What, what, I guess I'm trying to connect now, you know, we didn't quite hit all the targets, as we know, you know, throughout the year. And what would you say going into this school year about strategies or interventions that have great impacts because those are, that would lead to, you know, improved outcomes for this particular goal?
So I, I think, you know, based on our focus with chronic absenteeism and dropout rate last year, we definitely saw the improvements in chronic absenteeism. So continuing what we did last year with really the drive and the understanding and communication with parents and families about the importance of coming to school. And then with dropout, you know, with our data, it still shows, you know, we, we're struggling there. And that's why the focus is there. That's why we, again, the board just added a, agreed to add a new position, you know, to really assist in that realm as well. So there's still data points that we need to follow.
And has that position been filled yet? I can't recall.
I'm happy to speak to that. So I'm working with a group of principals from all three levels on the job description. We met as recently as last Friday to finalize some things because of the new accountability system and that's really not final, final yet. We've been using all of the information that we've recently received to make sure that we're hitting every area that needs to be hit before we finalize that job description. Because at the end of the day, attendance, dropouts, anything related to attendance is gonna be twenty percent of the accountability system for high school. So we need to get it right the first time.
All right. Let me, Mr. Clanton, then back to-
Yeah, I just need a, you had a follow-up to something that they?
Not, I mean, it's on the topic, but it's-
Oh, okay. Let me just kinda get my name right quick then. Thank you. So, I wanted to go back, particularly when we mentioned J Cox, PB Young and Ruffner, and then looking at what's not going well and then also the next steps, resources. And the first thing that comes to me is dollars and people. Where are we lacking? Because what this doesn't tell me, I know that we're working on tutors and so forth there, but is it that we're not putting enough dollars or resources? I mean, I know we say equity. I mean, are we putting enough into these particular schools here or, I mean, I, help me understand that and just anybody else?
So as, as we've discussed, we are very equitable when we place the positions. So J Cox, PB Young and Ruffner receive more instructional specialist support. They receive more tutors. They receive, you know, more support from either Dr. Walter's team or Mr. Brady's team. You know, they're higher on the priority list if something comes up, that, that we're there first.
Than any other school?
That, we, we tier our schools, you know, just, just-
Just because of what we have right there?
Correct. So, yeah, we, we, we are very focused on the high needs that they have and what we can do to provide them their supports first.
So I, I, one of the other things that goes back, I know we were talking about the attendance recovery and the action there, I'm not gonna get into the actual steps in there, but open campus is still there.
Absolutely.
And is a very valuable opportunity in what we're doing. But I wanted to go back to the average reading rate. And you said we've been steady. It's sixty-one percent, which still says it's about thirty-nine percent of our students are not reading on a great level. They're not, they're not being proficient in that. And, and I know I see a lot of tutors and I guess for me, I'm, I'm looking at, I follow one of my fraternity brothers who's the mayor of Birmingham, he's former president of their school board, and I met him a long time ago. But I know one of the things that he did, because Birmingham was very similar, urban school division, having the same challenge. And one of the things that I thought I saw come out of this, I think we started with the reading, didn't we have some type of book that we wanted to get everybody to kinda get around?
I read the first chapter.
Read the first chapter.
All city reads.
Yep, all city reads. And I'm, I'm really looking at, we're doing our part inside of the school building at the time that our students are with us. Really now, I think that it goes beyond outside of the school building and the accountability as a community that we have to take. This is a challenge that we have around literacy. And whether or not it's pulling together with the superintendent, our mayor, member, school board members, whatever it be, our faith partners, that this really is, this is a challenge and we all have to take ownership around literacy. We know that if a child can't read, they can't do the math. So we're getting some who are getting there and that's why these things are, they're all connected. So I would just say in my, you know, what we're gonna do is to encourage the administration to be bolder in our actions regarding, I know we're starting off with this, you know, reading piece, but in the call to the community, that this is a top priority, not just for entire of our teachers and our staff members, they're doing what they need to do, but we've gotta read to, to our, to our babies outside of the building. We've gotta reinforce that. And some of the things that I picked up, like Birmingham has a Page PALS, they have a community-wide read aloud called Page PALS. They have their community, this is where individuals are coming in and supplementing tutors and everything else, you know, singers, but then they have their community-wide read alouds. And then they have, of course, also working with Parks and Recreation to incorporate this into some of their after-school programs. So I'm just, when I'm looking at this here, yeah, we're staying steady, we haven't slipped, but we're not moving either. And so what is it gonna take? Because if you're telling me we've got the resources and we're putting it in there and I'm looking at our next steps and it's saying that we're putting tutors in place, what's the thing that's missing? The thing I'm hearing that's missing is community, get, understanding that this is a priority and we all have to take ownership around this and that we have to look at some things that we can do outside of the school day to support what's happening around literacy and that if we, if, if we can galvanize a community around this, I think that that may be the last thing that's kinda missing there because we realize there are many challenges that are still in households. Obviously, I, I wouldn't just say that, you know, a parent is just being derelict and they don't wanna reach to their child. We know that in many situations, it's a challenge. You, you may not have that, but what can we do as a community? And I know that there's so many community partners, we're talking about how we can partner with the schools, you know, it's beautification, some of these other things are nice, but right now, I think the all hands on deck is literacy is our number one focus as well as making sure that our kids are in school. And if we can work with our community partners, working with community engagement, whatever, to really get a solid and robust plan, we're doing some things, but I think that we need to do more and I think that we can-
Call to action.
It's, it needs to be a call to action, that, yes, this is the reality, this is where we are. How can we galvanize the community together and look at the positive, it's that lemonade, right? Half-gold glass, empty, half-full, but how can we move this, move the needle? And that would be my challenge.
And we agree with you and we could be more bold in our, you know, steps towards that. And I can tell you, and Dr. Paul, you can tell them more about the, the Norfolk Reads, all Norfolk Reads, but I know, for example, when mothers are having babies now, Kelly Sido, our preschool coordinator, she's done an extremely wonderful job with getting partners and being able to provide all the mothers that have kids with a library with books when, when their children are born. So we're starting very, very young. And I know this year, we had a strong start to all Norfolk Reads. I did, I read a chapter to the, the vision and we're hoping that parents are also reading the next chapters with their children and it's more involved than that. But I, we agree that we could probably be more bold in our efforts to, to engage with people a little more to get them on board. You wanna tell them a little bit?
But I'm just saying on that one, I, I don't wanna go to you on that one, but we as board members should really be joining with you as administration in that effort. Our members of council are, and other individuals, what, I'm sorry. You've, you've been talking about something. I'm, I'm just saying we need to, it's there, but it needs a, it needs an additional face. And I think when people see that or you see your pastor or your rabbi is being a reader, you know, it sends a message.
When they see me wear a high school shirt and the office, it is, it, a connection is there unlike any other. It is, they listen better, they, oh, they trust a little bit more for whatever reason.
You're not wearing the Grammy one though, right?
Yes, I am. I have all, I have a, I'm sure for all the high schools and some in elementary schools, but yes, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. So I, I think, you know, I'd like to point out, too, we are one of the few cities that does the all-city reads twice a year as well. Most only do it one of the semesters, cause it's, it's, it's a large effort to do. And we do work with community partners because there are donations for the books as well. And, and like Dr. Birdsong said about our early learning department, every, every child that's born within Norfolk gets a, a book packet and an information packet on our pre-K program. And not only that, if they register, they get a book mailed to them every year. So they get a first birthday book, they get a second birthday book, and we're getting ready to have the third birthday books come up. And those students are the ones that we'll be looking at for pre-K as well to, to come in. And then we've also started at our Title I schools, every kindergartner who registers gets a home library kit. And I think it's, it's, in our family engagement specialist work with the parents on, on what is this, you know, why is reading important? I think, I, I think we're really strong on that end. And I think when we have our middle schoolers that are struggling to read, that's where we need more community assistance.
Yeah, I think you guys are great on the, the early part right now, but we still have a bubble that it's still suffering from a couple of years when they got started. They did not have the strongest start. And they're still struggling through this middle and some of the high school. The reality is, is that we have a lot of kids who can't read. And, and that's taking ownership and saying, and the reality, and just be transparent, they cannot read. What are we gonna do about it? I think there are a lot of things that are here, I'm just putting it out there, that I think that there's, there needs to be a stronger call to community. This is a challenge and we all wanna wrap around this and figure out how we can put our heads to, to support. I think you're doing great on the early childhood and things down there, but I think, and then that gets into a whole nother, other things. Kid can't read, they're getting frustrated, now we've got disciplinary issues, we've got all these other, it, it's all connected. And I think if we can just be a little bit bolder around that, that's all.
All connected in different subject areas, too.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Martin, Ms. Basin and then Mr. Jordan and board members, it is six oh four, so we're gonna-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna say, if you're someone who has been brought up in Norfolk, you might not realize that Norfolk is a really unique city. Most communities do not have neighborhood library access like Norfolk does. So we, you know, someone very long ago, I'm sure many people, thought ahead and thought about, you know, the importance of reading. And I absolutely a hundred percent, you know, agree with everything that's been said about that. And I live it, right? So I work in a library, I, you know, I, I am the liaison to the Norfolk Public Library Board of Trustees, I attend those meetings. And so I have insight to all of the programs that are going on. And the one thing that's been developed over the past maybe six years or so has been this lifelong learning program. And I have to say that it has really taken off. And they have an amazingly robust website that has all of the cities, city departments' events around literacy as well as community organizations and they're, they're still looking for more. So any organization can advertise on there. There are hundreds of opportunities for anyone to walk into a library, get this information. You know, there's, there's just so many things going on in this city. It's, it's really remarkable and we're really blessed to have all the resources and actual access to opportunities to read to children, read to seniors, to interact and, and to promote literacy in our area. I just think that it's sometimes overwhelming for some people. You know, I mean, you know, you're busy and you wanna fit this in, you know, I mean, there's, there's just really so much. So I don't think there's a lack of opportunity. I think we just need to remind each other, you know, sometimes. And, and you're right, I mean, I, you know, people become parents and they're like, oh wait, I should be, you know, just, you know, you have to pay it forward with each generation. So that's my response to that. But I did have a question earlier. And that is, every time we, we get these reports, it's always, we're up here, we're down here, oh wait, now we're up here and we're down here. What is it gonna take to see progress in every area of academics? When are we gonna get that, that report? I mean, what is it gonna take? I, I just wanna know.
Honestly, I think, you know, if you, I think if you start to look at our staffing and you start to look at our, we had even a lower turnover rate last year than we did the year before. And you start to look at the continuation of folks who are staying with Norfolk Public Schools and the professional development we offer, you're gonna see better consistency in all the classrooms. Our tutors, we were able to secure our UI tutors earlier because we had the, the local budget, cause you know, we were worried about Esser, but we had the local budget already that was, you know, that Dr. Birdsong put in and you guys approved so that we had that. So then our tutors, we retained, I think, over eighty percent of our tutors. So we have the same folks who are able to come back to do that. The more we look at the retention and the more we look at having this, the same folks and growing our own folks, that's when you're gonna see it, Dr. Martin. That, that's, that's a, a key aspect to a child's education is having, having, having teachers who are consistently in the division.
And Dr. Martin, I know I sound like a broken record, but at the end of the day, the classroom is where the rubber meets the road. And if we have a highly qualified, effective teacher in front of our children every day, that's gonna make the difference. And our staffing looks so much better than it did last year, as you know, as you well know. So, great teachers, great results, with good support for teachers and kids.
Basin, then Mr. Jordan.
I, I have additional questions, comments, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Jordan.
You can go ahead, my stomach's turning, so you go ahead.
Well, you're not alone. I, I'm, I honestly am gonna say to my board colleagues that I'm, I am encouraged on the one hand by the conversation and frustrated all at the same time, cause these are things that have come up over and over and over again and we're not making progress. And I am disappointed in, in the results that we're seeing. And, you know, I'm just gonna put that on the table that, you know, I'm not happy about where, where we are. And I don't feel like we've got, at least I can't see what strategies are really, really gonna move us and be confident in that. So right now, I'm, I'm, I'm not there yet. The one thing that was concerning, so the three schools that are, were read E-level three in all areas have consistently been in that position unfortunately for several years, many, many years. And when I look at, I think you mentioned staffing earlier about equitable staffing. J Cox is at fifty-five percent certified teachers, eighty-three percent with the associate teachers. And Ruffner is at seventy percent with certified teachers. And so, or seventy, yeah, seventy, seventy-eight percent maybe. But regardless, not fully staffed or even close, that, you know, this has come up year after year about equitable staffing and doing something different than what we've been doing. And I know those are EALC schools, which I still am having trouble trying to figure out where that alignment, what that, what that, what that programmatically is really gonna mean for those schools. Like with detail, with, you know, measurements, monitoring, how we're gonna make sure that all of the supports are there and it's not just after-school programs. So that's something that I, I think we really have to, like, the laser light vision, that's, that's really where I wanna see us put some, some real effort around. And real effort, like with, with accountability for, of ourselves, cause I hold myself accountable for the lack of progress that has been made. And to see the same schools in that level i- is- And to see the same schools in that level is unacceptable to me. The other thing, the conversation about the community, you know, being involved in literacy, that's something that we've been talking about, like, the entirety that I've been on the board. You know, to be a city that reads, and I know NPL, I'm glad you brought that up. That was one thing I wanted to bring up about the great partnership that we've had there. And also, you know, we, we've had, had opportunities ourselves, I think, to be involved in things. And I was reminded during COVID, Mr. Jordan, in collaboration with Star Armstrong, Clever Communities in Action, like, without skipping a beat, you know, I was just amazed that just started, you know, the literacy gang and was on the internet every night reading to students. And I know, and I recall at that time in being encouraged, you know, let's do this as a, as a board. And let's do this as a, as an, you know, as a school system. And it quite didn't go that way, but, you know, there's nothing to, to prevent us from individually doing it. Ourselves to or partnering with an organization to do it. But there is so much great work that is being done in the community around literacy, which that, that's just one example. And the libraries are one example, or many examples. But, I mean, I don't disagree with any of that, but these are all things that are, that are happening. And yet, what is happening in the school system, I feel, needs to be reexamined and positioned in a way to accelerate proficiency for our students. And so, I'm just going to leave that there.
Jordan?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate Ms. Bassin's comments, she did touch on a couple of things. I wanted to hit on being deliberate in my cadence, because that's what I do when I am upset. First, I have some clarifications on the report. In the, what does the data show? You reference fully accredited, accredited and credited with conditions. Is fully accredited meant to indicate schools that are accredited without waivers? What, what's the differentiation between being fully accredited, schools moving to be accredited, and then schools being accredited with conditions?
Accredited and fully accredited are the same.
Okay, I, I, okay.
There's, there's three levels, there's accredited, accredited with conditions, and accreditation denied.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I didn't know if there was some, some significance behind.
Well, the, the fully is because the boards, the board goal had in there, or the, the, maybe the measure had the word fully accredited in there.
Yeah, I think that was probably some carryover.
Yeah, so, yeah, we just.
It is carryover language.
Yeah, it is.
So, so that, so we're saying there, we saw two schools that were accredited. We saw a decrease of two schools that were accredited.
Overall, the net was two schools went down.
Right, two schools went down.
Because we had five schools that went down and three schools that came up.
The color chart that you were, that you have referencing and said that we received at the retreat, which, which dated one are you, are you using?
It's a July one, it, it's, I still have the preliminary one that I'm using for the data, the data hasn't changed much.
It has the six eighteen preliminary updated, six eighteen.
I, I'm not sure if mine has that date or another date on it, Mr. Jordan, to be honest. But the date, the data, mine has an August date. But they are, this is the same, the, the data has not moved in relative to the chart you had, that was at the board retreat. Because if you remember, we uploaded one, two or three days before the retreat because we had more recent data to upload. And so that one and this one.
I think there is an August, I think the one that we got at the retreat was there was a following update. But is this, is there some reason why we just can't have the, the chart updated and provided to us as of October first? So we can all be looking at the same thing and be clear? Okay, I, I'd, I'd appreciate that. The, tell me about, I appreciate what you've done in your report and, and how we've been tracking classroom level, building level, professional development, tutoring. Talk to me about here, central administration. One of the things that I guess resonates in my head, when Ms. Campson was on the board, and I remember one of the first years, she would articulate in her own way that the scores are flat. And, and that the scores were flat and the board wasn't getting information. And when I go back and look at during my tenure on the board, so and Dr. Gables, I think when we first got on the board, the, we walked into accreditation rate being at thirteen percent. Then it went to twenty-nine percent. Then it went to thirty-nine percent, I'm rounding up. Then it went to sixty-one percent. And then the next year was sixty-one percent, I, I assumed at the time that's when it was flat. Then, then it went to sixty-seven point four percent. Then it dropped to fifty-seven percents. And now it has dropped slightly again to fifty-six percent. So, we've, we've had, I acknowledge the, the pandemic. But I don't really feel a sense of, it's just my perspective, maybe I should say this amongst the board. I really don't get a real sense of urgency like we did when we were talking about the scores being flat before. We've increased the size of our leadership team. We have the largest number of chiefs than we've had that I can ever remember. We've provided consistent improved funding as a result of the revenue sharing formula with the, with the city. We received millions in pandemic and, and other funds. We've received more millions as a result of resources that the governor has provided. We've seen our enrollment decline. Yet we're seeing, we're not flat. We are, at this, on this indicator, we are trending downward. We have, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think every school, or almost every school, has a comprehensive school improvement plan. So, in these descriptions, I'm, I'm acknowledging what we are describing in the building and in the classroom. But I'm not real clear on where the accountability is at the central administration building and the supports that we really need to provide to the principals and to the teachers to ensure their success and what is delivering, what is being delivered to our students. So can you speak to me or Dr. Birdsong? How does, how does the accountability work here amongst the, the chiefs, the executive directors, the senior directors? When we, in the context of the performance that we are seeing as relates to having fully accredited schools?
I'd like to start with that. So while you might think that we don't have a sense of urgency.
I said, I don't feel.
You don't feel. I, I feel, I know that there's a sense of urgency. There is a sense of urgency amongst myself, members of the leadership team, cab, building principals and teachers. Everybody is feeling a sense of urgency. We're in a time like no other right now. And I can tell you, we have boots on the ground, we, we meet all the time to talk about our data. We're constantly reviewing the data. We're constantly meeting with building principals, asking them what their needs are. And we respond to those needs. And I would say, I would say emphatically, I know for a, a fact, especially our colleagues in curriculum and instruction, they are there every day with their sleeves rolled up, working on hands and knees with teachers to make a difference in classrooms. And so I do believe, yes, the data are flat. I do believe that we can do better, we have higher expectations of ourselves and our children. But we do feel a sense of urgency, and I know people are working. There's not enough time in the day to do what we do. We are working every day, all day. When a lot of you are probably home having dinner with your families, look out in the parking lot and cab. You will see a lot of cars out there, including my car. So we are working very hard to make a difference. And I, I regret that you don't feel that there's a sense of urgency, but I can assure you that there is, Mr. Jordan.
Well, to elaborate on that, again, I, I see it at the building level. I see the data walls when I get a chance to visit. Just, just for clarity, I don't sleep. So this stuff keeps me up at night, and I'm sure it keeps you all up at night at too. I'm not really, I'm not really trying to have a conversation around the, 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 the the effort ratio. What I'm really trying to get is to get a better understanding of what is it that we need to do better? And how do we support our principals and our teachers better? So that the outcomes that we have for students trend, trend in another direction. And so, can you speak to me about, from the central administration perspective? What is it that you feel that, I'm just going to say downtown, because that's where, that downtown can do better as we talk about next, next steps?
And I'd like to tackle that a little bit. So, if, if I can be fully transparent, because we do have these conversations about, you know, we're taking things off of the plates of teachers as we should. We, we're taking things off of the plates of principals as we should. I, I do believe that my team feels like there's more focus and work. And I'm not saying it's not important work, so I don't want to convey that at all. But we spend a lot of time on goals, non-negotiables, interim measures, looking at the data, redoing the data, redoing the charts. We spend a lot of time on that. And I think, especially our colleagues in our assessment department, they're spending much more time on that now than ever before. So I, I do believe that there's a, a lot of time and effort being spent on. And again, I'm not saying it's not important, it's not important work, because I do believe it is important work. And, and we strive to meet our, the goals that the school board has established. But I think we, we feel like we're often pulled in a million different directions. And it, it feels like no matter what we do, it's, it's just never good enough, if I can be transparent.
So, the, the rationale behind the goals is to provide focus. So if you recall, for many times, we would hear that the, the plea to the board was, tell us what you want us to do. And so, the, the reason why the board adopted goals was to provide focus on student outcomes. And the goals were formed based upon the needs assessments and the feedback that we received from, from the administration. Now, I don't, I can't speak to what the challenges may be in terms of producing a report. I, I don't, I don't know if that's the piece of it, but clearly what the, what the goals are intended to drive is, is Mr. Clanton and others talked about earlier, there's clear focus on the goals around literacy. There's clear focus on the goals around third grade students. There's clear focus in the goals around African-American students. And we, you know, we had some debate even about how do we get there? And there's clear focus around school accreditation. So, what the board in, in communicating that is, you know, as we've represented the community, this is what we think needs to be prioritized. So, with that being said, the opportunity then is for more focus on those things and less focus on, on other things, if that's what is required to, to get, to get us to move forward. The, the interim goals are, you know, created by superintendent administration. And the intent is, is that if we are making progress on the interim goals based upon the expertise that you all have, then, over the cycle, over a period of time, three to five years, as we've set the goals, we should be able to see us hitting the interim goals, which then should give us some level of confidence of the direction that we're going in, that we're going to hit the end goal. And so, right now, our, we're not hitting our interim goals. And that's why I would always ask the question about, do we need to make some, what shifts do we need, need to make in order to either accelerate what we're doing or maybe make some, some shifts? That's why we leave those strategy decisions really up to the, the administration. So the idea behind the board focusing on the goals, the board monitoring the goals, is for the board to send a message to the division as a whole, this is what we value and this is what we think our attention should be given. And so even when we have the conversations around budget time, that's one of the reasons that, at least I know I ask, are we, is the budget being aligned to the goals? Because that is an opportunity then to really hone in and, and focus there. So, I just wanted to, to raise that because I don't doubt the effort. I put in a lot of effort to things and sometimes they bear fruit and sometimes they don't. I really am trying to put a, a focus on what do we need to do differently and better and more effectively in order to get there? The non-negotiables are intended to say, hey, do what you got to do, just don't violate these things. And so if one of the things that we say we have is a non-negotiable is that we don't want to have our schools that are in greatest need to have the, have large vacancies or a significant number of teachers, non-certified teachers in the classroom. Then, when we then look at the reports and we're hearing that we have three schools that are on the, on the challenge list, or whatever the appropriate terminology is, and then we also see that those same schools have this disproportionality around the teachers in the classroom, we're, we're giving you leeway to say, and I know you mentioned about things being equitable, we're trying to give you the leeway to do that. But I just didn't feel comfortable not just trying to have some type of conversation around the fact that we need to shift our trend line. And, and if there are things that need to be brought forward to shift that trend line within the scope of the school division. I appreciate what Mr. Clanton was talking about in terms of the community. And I've studied the work that the mayor has done in, in Birmingham. But at the end of the day, the community can, whatever we get from the community, when the children walk through the threshold of Norfolk Public Schools, it's our job to, to support them and educate them to the best we can. And, you know, whatever the parents do, we know is a plus. And what the parents don't do, we know can be a minus, we still have to teach them. And so, I just wanted to ask again if there's any additional thoughts that you have at this point in time? If not, later we'll, we'll suffice around what we might be able to do better downtown in supporting our buildings. And I just ask again because I've asked questions about these comprehensive school improvement plans. And if they aren't working, then maybe we need to have a conversation with the state around. with the state around what's being approved and what's being required. But in theory, as I understand them, they have laid out actions that if we are implementing and supporting those actions with fidelity, we should see growth and at some point being able to see it on a curve that is exponential and not on the line that we currently have.
I just, I want to mention one thing about the, and then, Mr. Jordan, this actually transitions, it's now the comprehensive school support plan. The VDOE has changed it, and they've changed the requirements of it and what is involved in the plan. And what we've been able to do as a division is change then how our focus is at the building level. And centrally, one of the things we've talked about, chief level, director level, as well as every other leadership level at Cab, is around every time we go in the building, that's the focus of discussion, the CSSP. Because if we're taking the time to get the input and to create the goals based off data, then it's our responsibility as leaders, when we're meeting with the principal, anytime, walkthroughs or anything else, bring up the CSSP, let's talk about it, how are you meeting it? Driving the data meetings, every single thing else. So that's something we're continuing to hone in on. You've heard us talk about data meetings, this is our third full year of having them. Every year, we polish it a little bit more, get a little bit more focused. And this year, with the transition to the CSSP, we've transitioned our data meetings that our agenda focuses on exactly the CSSP, all four aspects of it. I think as far as a sense of urgency, I would echo what Dr. Birdsong says. I've worked in one, two, three, four divisions. I've worked in, in all four of the divisions where I've been in a leadership position from assistant principal up. I've personally not worked harder, and I've personally not seen teams that work harder. I know for a fact too, that the directors under academic affairs hold their coordinators just as accountable as they hold themselves. I know that they keep records of where they are in schools and when they're in schools. And if they're not in schools, they mark it on their evaluation, they talk about it, and they make plans so that they are in school supporting, because that's our job. I made it known from the very get-go when I came here, that my expectation is to not see anybody in the office if kids are in schools. And I can attest to the fact that there's a lot of hard work going on with a sense of urgency. I think also, I'd like to add to that, you know, it's taken us a year and a half to find someone qualified to be the EL coordinator this board approved two years ago in the budget. That's a challenge for us. So those continue challenging, and supports for the board, when we do ask for positions, we ask for them because there's a need, and we appreciate when it's approved. But the other half is finding people that are qualified, that will make the difference in not settling. And your understanding as a board, that we're not going to settle when we're bringing leaders in the division, and that Dr. Birdsong would never ask for a position that's not needed, because I've asked for a position before, and she's told me, no, plenty of times, we don't need that position because we can do it this way. And not because it was, the reason was sound. You know, it was because this is where our focus needs to be, and this position might be off of focus. So she is, leadership-wise, very knowledgeable of who needs to be in this building to provide the supports that we need.
And just one final question then, because you mentioned evaluations. So I do know that, at least in conversations with principals, I know that they get held accountable for the goals that they agree to with their comprehensive plans, whatever plans that they have. How does that, how's that dealt with from the central administration perspective when it comes to the academic performance of our students? How's that fit in here?
Thing, we look at goals, we goal-set, and we look at progress.
Mr. Jordan, I will share with you, I've had courageous conversations with Ms. Amber Brown, who is our new chief schools officer, and our executive directors around expectations, around progress in schools and that alignment with evaluations. And they can assure you that we've had that conversation more than a few times this summer and this school year. Is that not right, ladies?
Thank you, yes. That's encouraging, so thank you.
Yes, and in addition to that, I will also say this, Mr. Jordan, and we talked about this when we set these goals. These goals are, they're pretty significant goals, and, you know, they're not, you know, incremental steps, a point here, a point there. We've set some pretty lofty goals, and we said that in the beginning. For example, it's the expectation in a couple of years that all of our schools be accredited. I know the terminology will change. Well, that has never happened in Norfolk Public Schools before, but in a couple of years, that's what we're expecting. You know, you're expecting this administration to make that happen. And so you need to know, whatever goals this board sets, we're going to work towards achieving those goals with everything that we have.
Very much, appreciate it.
All right, so the time now, school board members, is 6:37. I know we have the Virginia New School Performance and Support Framework, Dr. Birdsong.
Yes.
So if we could...
Okay, so it's going to depend on the questions. You all have a lot, because it is a new accountability system. And so Dr. Poehl will introduce Ms. McGarrettie. She's in our ARA department. She does a phenomenal job with crunching our data, providing that professional development for our principals. We just engaged in a recent activity, in fact, it was last Thursday, last Thursday, right? All the days are kind of going together. Last Thursday, she did some PD with the building principals and members of the central office team to talk about the new performance, the new School Performance and Support Frame Network, new terminology, we're all transitioning. It's quite different than the former accountability system. I think there's pros and cons to the new system. It's not quite finalized yet, so we're still working through some of the details of that, and we will certainly keep the board updated as we get new information. So, Dr. Poehl, if you want to introduce Ms. McGarrettie.
You stole all the thunder, which is great. So I did, good afternoon again, everybody, but I have Ms. McGarrettie here to run through. She is definitely our resident expert on the new support framework. But we'll be spending some time really going over a view of changes in how the new School Performance and Support Framework had developed, been developed and rolled out, and what's still ongoing. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McGarrettie to waste no more time, and if you have questions at the end, you know, we'll all be happy to respond to them and answer them. So, Ms. McGarrettie.
Thanks, Dr. Poehl, and I'm trying to make this as painless as possible, because it is very different, and it's a big change, a mind shift for all of us. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Buffalo, Vice Chair, Dr. Gabriel, fellow board members, and Superintendent Dr. Birdsong. I'm excited to share with you the information pertaining to the new Virginia Accountability System tonight. So I'm going to walk through the high-level concepts, and then I'm going to dig into each portion of the new system as we know it at this point in time. So again, things are still shifting and changing, we update as we go. I do ask that you hold all questions until the presentation is complete, as I've tried to anticipate questions, which I'm hoping will be answered throughout the presentation. And please be reminded that all details for this accountability system haven't been communicated to divisions, resulting in this presentation containing only what we know at this point in time, from Virginia Board of Education presentations and other meetings. So on this slide here, this shows the VDOE timeline for the development and the implementation of the new accountability system, which is the Virginia School Performance and Support Framework. Currently, we're at the phase indicated by the yellow star, and at the same time, as well as the event prior and the event after. The event under the yellow star is when VDOE has said that divisions will receive their data that is resulting from the 23-24 school year, which will be sometime during the fall. This event has not occurred as of this presentation, nor has an exact date been communicated to divisions. The event prior to the yellow star shows that we're in the data collection year for the new School Performance and Support Framework. The event after the yellow star is the first year school statuses will be determined by the new framework, resulting from the 24-25 data. As a note, in previous years, when VDOEs moved to a new accreditation or accountability system, schools were labeled with either the new or the old versions, depending on where they performed best. However, since VDOE has, is moving away from a separate state accreditation system and federal accountability system to a singular accountability system, divisions are required to move directly to the new School Performance and Support Framework. So this slide here is a view of the current system that we're wrapping up on the left. On the right is the new approved Virginia School Performance and Support Framework. VDO reported in their presentations, the purpose of this new accountability system is to communicate more clearly the support schools need in Virginia, and to pull together federal and state funds to implement those supports that are needed. The current system is a state accreditation system based on Virginia regulations, and there was a federal accountability system that was running concurrently. So on the right, where it's the new system, it pulls together both those systems and encompasses state and federal regulations and laws, as well as funding. So let's kind of pull, we're going to start pulling it apart slowly as we go. So here's the new system, it's a weighted framework. It consists of three categories at each level. All three levels have mastery and readiness components. Elementary and middle school's third component is growth, while high school's is graduation. You'll notice all three framework categories are weighted differently, but they all equal a total of 100%, or the way, 100 points. First, let's look at the elementary school framework and its weight. Mastery is worth 65 points, growth is worth 25 points, and readiness is worth 10 points. And together, they all equal 100 points for the total framework. As a reminder, we'll talk more about all of the indicators on future slides. Second is the middle school framework, and you'll notice the same categories as elementary, but the weights are different. Mastery and growth are decreased in weight, and readiness is increased. Third is high school. Graduation is worth 15 points of the total framework, and you'll notice high school does not have growth like elementary and middle school. Additionally, the high school readiness indicator is worth 35 points, and mastery is worth 50 points. At the very bottom of the screen, what you see here are the four performance categories with their designated point values. Schools are going to be assigned a performance category depending on the total points they've earned collectively from all three categories, which consist of mastery, growth, readiness, and graduation. The performance categories are distinguished, which require 90 points and above, on-track, requiring 80 to 89 points, off-track with 65 to 79 points, and needs intensive support is 65 points and below. The performance categories are taking the place of labeling schools as accredited with conditions and accreditation denied. All right, so within, so now that we've kind of looked at the big overall picture of that, digging in a little further within each category. So with the overall framework, let's look at the indicators that are within. It helps us to start to understand how schools can earn the points that are compiled to equal a school's total points. So using mastery in elementary as an example, and we will get to the others as well, I promise. Mastery in elementary is worth 65 points. Those 65 points are broken up into four indicators. A reading SOL index worth 22.5 points, a math SOL index worth 22.5 points, a science SOL index worth 10 points, and finally, EL progress worth 10 points. Schools with too few EL students will have the 10 points redistributed elsewhere within the system. The same concept applies to all the other categories of growth, readiness, and graduation. All right, so let's look at mastery and how do we get there? So with the mastery, this chart here is just a reminder of those weights back on that previous slide, the four areas under, and you'll see the total is the weights at each level. So the reading, math, science indexes are all determined with SOL performance, the EL progress is going to be determined with our English language proficiency test, which is the access for L's that all of our EL students take. For reading and math and science indicators, they're moving away from a pass rate and moving to a mastery index. So this is one of the major shifts for us to try and wrap our heads around. The mastery index means, here's this chart of what the points mean, that every test there have points and weights will be assigned to the outcome for students, and then compiled to determine points for each indicator. And the indicators were the reading, math, science, and then we have the EL, which is a different assessment. On the left of the bottom chart are the points given for performance on the grades three through eight reading and math tests, and on the right are the points given for performance on EOC tests, all-level science tests, and VAP tests. The takeaway is here, that all students who take the test will receive at least partial points. Students who are in a pass advance on their test will receive 1.25 points, and if they're pass proficient, they'll receive one point. As I stated previously, VDOE hasn't provided enough information for divisions to run calculations based on last year's assessments, but this kind of gets us started. Now for the growth category, which is going to be on this slide here, that growth is in both middle and elementary, and it is grades four through eight. So the charts, the reminder, has the weights for each area. Elementary, 25% of the weight is on growth. For middle, it's 20% of that weight, and then that's broken up between elementary and middle. It's going to be calculated very differently than it has in the past, and is an expected growth measure. Growth in reading and math may include students who fail and pass their SOL tests, another big difference. The expected growth data will be calculated by the Virginia Visualization and Analytics Solution, also known as VIVAS. VIVAS uses a state comparison to calculate expected growth, which means this data will not be available until later in the fall of the following school year, cannot be calculated internally by staff. All right, readiness. So readiness category. This is the category, which we're going to talk about next. It's also included in the framework at all three levels. The VDOE definition for readiness is that students are ready for the next level, specifically elementary students are ready for middle, middle school students are ready for high, and high school students are ready for post-secondary life. All three levels have chronic absenteeism included at their respective weights. Elementary and middle have a performance task that will be piloted in year one, and is proposed to be implemented in year two, which will shift the weights around at that time. Until then, elementary readiness will only include chronic absenteeism. Middle school will have, middle school advanced math coursework as an additional indicator to the chronic absenteeism until year two, when the middle school performance task is proposed to be implemented. We'll talk more about the middle school math advanced course on the next slide. High school will have the Extended Year Graduation Completion Index, which we've always known as the GCI, and the Ready for Life 3E Indicator as additional indicators to the chronic absenteeism. The three Es are enrollment, employment, and enlistment, which we will review shortly. And the GCI indicator is the same as we've always known it in any of the previous accreditation systems. So the advanced coursework in middle school, so we're going to only focus on year one portion of this slide, since that's what we know will be implemented. Overall, the middle school advanced math coursework will include students who are considered ready for EOC math coursework in the middle school, according to VDOE's definition of ready, and their performance on the EOC math SOL tests. And that performance is in the index, is pass/fail for this piece of it. As far as we understand at this time, students who are considered ready for EOC math courses in middle school are students who are currently in EOC math courses, and any eighth graders who pass their seventh-grade math SOL with a pass advanced in the previous school year. VDOE's proposed for science and history EOC courses and tests to come online in year two of the new accountability system. The proposal is to include middle school science and history EOC tests in the readiness category, similar to it is in for math. We don't have any further information about this area at this time and what they are proposing other than looking at that for next year. So we're going to jump to ready, we're still in readiness category, but to high school. So we're going to jump to the 3E framework, which, that three Es, just as a reminder, is enrollment, employment, and enlistment, which each have a leveled point system depending on the task students complete. In this framework, VDOE reported, students can be counted multiple times if they complete more than one task across the 3E framework. In the enrollment section of the three Es, a student can earn 1.25 points for earning an associate's degree while in high school. However, most of the points for enrollment are based on the total amount of exam scores from AP and IB courses, as well as grades in dual enrollment courses. In employment, points are based on a CTE sequence and earning an associated industry credential. A full point can be earned by a student for their CTE sequence and industry credential completion to be in a high-demand and high-wage field. If the core sequence and credential are not in a high-demand and/or high-wage area, only a portion of the point can be earned. Enlistment is solely dependent on a student's performance in the ASVAP. So there's three different levels, so at a minimum, .5 for a score of 31, full points 65 or higher. point, 65 or higher. So the final category is graduation for high school, which is worth 15 points. This category will not be using one of the Virginia graduation rates that we have used in the past. VDOE has decided to use the Four-Year Federal Graduation Index, which we've known as the FGI, which has major differences when compared to other Virginia graduation rates. FGI only includes students who earn an advanced and standard diploma within four years. Students who earn GEDs, applied studies diplomas, are dropouts, or earn other diplomas after four years will be counted as a zero in this category. Due to the FGI not including other graduation scenarios beyond standard and advanced diploma, VDOE did decide to include the extended GCI as part of the readiness indicator that we talked about earlier. All right, so those are all the indicators. So once all the indicators, all of the information is compiled, all the points from the categories are compiled, a school will have a total amount of points, which will then designate which performance category they will be labeled. As a reminder, distinguished schools, 90 or more points; on-track schools, 80 to 89 points; off-track schools must have earned 65 to 79, and schools needing intensive support would have 65 points or below. The categories indicate the type of support a school will receive from the school, Office of School Quality at VDOE. We do know that student groups will be calculated essentially in the same way as we've discussed, but it's not yet clear how that's factored into the new Virginia performance category and system of supports for schools. And with that, thank you for your time, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
School board members, you've heard the report. Are there any questions? Dr. Gabriel?
For SOLs, is there any change for the actual testing that takes place for the SOLs starting in grade three?
The changes in the SOLs, the only changes there are is the tests, the standards it's assessing, because the new standards have been implemented.
Okay.
It is not who tests or how many and that kind of thing.
Ms. Pessine?
So if you could go back to the slide just before this one. This is going to take me some time to, like, really wrap my head around it, but...
Not the only one.
Yeah, so, we're still examining pass rates, so we've got the pass rates that will still, calculations for that, so calculations for that will remain the same. So I'm, I'm trying to see where, year to year, what, what we are going to be able to compare, I guess that's going forward with this.
Do you want to jump any?
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. Whatever you want. Speaking of that evaluation, he does mind.
Ms. Pessine, that's kind of what I was mentioning earlier. So now what we need to look at focusing on, when the state's able to give us the data that, you know, Ms. McGarrettie shared, that they haven't given us yet, that's supposed to be this fall, we're going to, our schools will fall in one of these four categories.
So they're taking our data?
They're going to take our last year's data and give us...
And that was my next question.
...you will be falling, but they haven't given it, and they haven't given us a date when they're giving it. So the only thing we can play around with is the, the SOL scores that we have, and you saw that the most of those are 65 points out of the 100 points needed, so it really isn't a reliable source of saying where we're going to fall anywhere yet.
Right.
So that's where we are at this point. So in the future, we'll be talking about intensive support, off-track, on-track, distinguished.
Okay. Thank you. And you answered my last question about if we're looking at our, where we fall with our current data, I mean, last year's data. So that was it for me for right now. I don't know where to start.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the presentation. I have sat through in person and watched online the, the state board grapple with this, and your presentation was probably one of the best I've heard, so, at least for me.
For us, too.
Yeah, so I appreciate...
I pulled my old teacher skills back out.
I, I appreciate that, I guess in part to the board and also to Dr. Burson and the I know that there's been a lot of conversation, many, so you all know I co-chair this task force on students in schools and childhood environments for VSBA. And so along with VAS and others, you know, we try to advocate for more consideration of the, of the growth. We aren't there yet. I, I know that there may be some legislative action that some of the members of the General Assembly may try to take towards making adjustments, but who knows what they'll come up with and what the governor will, will support or not support. So just in terms of, I guess, as we have, you know, Take Your Legislature to School Month and those types of things coming up, any suggestions that you have for us as a board? What we can do to try to get more support from VDOE? I mean, for example, we've been asking for, we, we're trying to get the board to consider modeling before they adopted this, just as you are now waiting on the modeling to determine where you go next. So to me, that's always seen backwards, but, you know, that ship for now has sailed. Are there any key points from a Norfolk Public Schools perspective that you think from a advocacy perspective, role of the board, that we should be considering in ways that can be supportive of the work that, that you all have to do as a result of this system change? And if not, you can think about it later, but I just think it's something we need to get some consideration of if there are one or two things that, from a Norfolk perspective, think may drive, you know, have impact on what we do.
One thing that I've been thinking about, and this is, like, fairly new to us, so in thinking about what you just said about the whole growth piece, so as, as they determine, they're going to have, they're going to establish what growth should look like for every child. And, and so that might be a little concerning, because at the end of the day, it, it just puts, it just, it, it treats everybody like...
Widgets.
That, that's right, exactly. It treats everybody like widgets, and of course, we are special and unique in Norfolk Public Schools for a variety of reasons. And so in, in thinking about how they're going to measure that growth, that, that may be a little concerning. Certainly, we have high expectations. Our children are bright, we have the best teachers, I've always said that, but there are other factors that, you know, that should be considered. And I, I think when you look at the whole state, in, in some instances, you know, it's, it could be like comparing apples to oranges. I just, so I don't know, any, anything you can do to advocate? Again, this is really fresh and new, that whole growth piece, because, you know, we are going in, we're moving in a very positive direction, and we just don't know what that's going to look like, because again, they're going to be establishing that, and it's going to be against like a state average or, or something like that. We're going to be compared to everybody else in the state. And so to me, that's a little concerning.
And I think the piece with it, too, is that you don't know what the goal is. So it's always with the growth, so because it's that state average, the kid, what we do now is look at where does this kid need to get next year, at a minimum. We don't stop and eat bonbons when we get there, but at a minimum, where do we need to get? And this system does not provide that goal, at least a minimum type of goal for growth, because even at pass advance, you still can grow, but what are we looking at? Because they have to wait for the entire state to test, compare kids, and when I like kids by grade and by score, not by demographic, and then they say, this is how much you, you met your expected growth, that you didn't know what it was. So that piece is huge.
And that could change every year. That will change every year.
Right.
At least on the surface, based upon our goals, the board goals, student outcome goals, outside of adjustments around, number one, with accreditation, it appears on the surface that, in some ways, we're still ahead of the game in that, you know, we're still have our own focus around literacy and gaps, and even the conversation we've been having around advanced diplomas seems, in some ways, to be ahead of where the state ended up going. I don't like to admit it, but even talking about what's on-track and off-track, but, but it looks like outside of that one goal, we might be good. However, some of those interim goals, we've already acknowledged, like the, like PALS no longer being in place would need to be, be adjusted. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah. And I, and you mentioned a, a good point about the gap groups, because we don't even know how that's going to be treated. We, we don't even know that yet.
I would, I want to go back to the other comment, too. I think another thing that, that the board could advocate for at the high school level, 20% is graduation rate. 15 of that percent is now the FCI, or FGI, and that means four years. So any student with an IP that's legally allowed to stay in school, there is zero if they go, and they're going to take a fifth year, you know, to get, because it's better for them to get that standard diploma, you know, instead, instead of at four years getting an applied studies diploma.
They would get zero points.
Zero points.
Zero points.
That's 20% of the high school's score.
May I ask what the rationale is behind that?
You have to go above that?
I doubt, you let us know, please.
I mean, I don't, yeah, because I've watched some of the meetings, but I don't recall...
It's that because they want to use the FGI, the Federal Graduation Index, and federal does not allow, that's part of what the Virginia layer on top was, was allowances for things that are appropriate, right? And so the, with them pulling these two things together, they're staying right within those federal rules.
Oh, okay.
And this is one of them.
It's a federal rule, okay.
I would, as far as your second part, Mr. Jordan, with the, the board goals, I, I, overall, I think we, we agree, the first one, it needs some, some remanufacturing. And then I would also say if the graduation part stands, I would, I would also, I would want to see more of a focus on just general graduation instead of advanced studies, you know, to, to meet that, that FGI need that we have in, in the fifth goal, if it's going to be that heavy of a weight, because there's no difference point-wise with an advanced diploma and a general studies diploma. There, there's no, no difference point-wise when it comes to accountability.
But understanding why you advocated for the advanced diploma piece.
Absolutely. More about the students than the time, the accreditation.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
All right, my team, it's 7:04. I want to go ahead and bring this to a close. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you again for getting a lot of work done today, and so with no other business, this work session is adjourned.